Hearing none, all votes in favor of Article 9. Press 1. All votes in opposition to Article 9, press 2 now. And we see eighty-nine percent of those in the audience supporting Article 9, and eleven percent opposed. It is a majority vote, motion passes. Article 10, Select and Agree?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to a reasonably appropriate total sum of fourteen million, two hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, factored by required net school spending of seventeen million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, plus three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twenty-nine cents from the prior year override, including a two-and-a-half percent escalator, plus sixty-three thousand dollars from solar and tire revenues for F-122, less three million, two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents for net school spending eligible in-game costs budgeted in the general government budget for school expenses. And this is all for the outgoing budget of the Woodston County Schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 10. Vote of the Select and?
For the Select and Recomenders, approval of this article, five to zero.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Would the Maker of Motion wish to speak?
It's pretty self-explanatory. You set the numbers on the School Committee side, and this, less this, minus this, take that into account. It is something that's been gone over by the Board of Stock and the Finance Committee, and of course, the School Committee in the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Hearing none, all votes in favor, press 1. All votes opposed, press 2 now. The vote is eighty-three percent in favor, seventeen percent opposed. This is a majority vote, the article passes. Article 11, Selectwoman Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to a reasonably appropriate the sum of seven hundred and eighteen-four thousand dollars to fund the town's assessment for the Montague Regional Vocational Technical School for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by many to approve Article 11. Vote of the Select and?
Five to zero.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Would the Maker of Motion like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article proposes funding of the F-122 assessment from the Montague Regional Vocational Technical School for the town proportionate share of its profits.
Does anyone in the hall wish to be recognized to speak? Seeing none, all votes in favor of Article 11 as presented. Click 1 for agree, click 2 for disagree, now. And the vote stands eighty percent in favor, twenty percent opposed. This is a majority vote article, therefore it passes. Article 12, Selectman Lord?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move to authorize the town manager an accordance with the divisions of General Law, Chapter 44, paragraph 21(c), to implement a lease purchase agreement for a term of four years for the acquisition and equipping of a ten-wheel gun truck with pile and with stand there insert for use by the department of Works.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 12 as presented. Vote of the Select and?
Select and recommend, five to zero.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Thank you. Would the Maker of Motion like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. A lease in excess of three years requires an authorization from town meeting. This truck will replace an older model that is being retired from service. The funding for the truck payment is included within Article 6. I can point out that this is replacing a 2,003 ten-wheel gun truck with over one hundred twenty-three thousand miles. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the hall want to be heard? Hearing none, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no, now. And it is eighty-three percent in favor, eighteen percent opposed. This is a two-thirds requirement, therefore the motion passes. Article 13, Selectman Lord?
Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of ninety-five thousand for the purchase, for the acquisition, and equipping of two police department crews.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by many to accept Article 13 as presented. Vote of the Select and?
Select and recommend, five to zero.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Thank you. Would the Maker of Motion like to speak?
Thank you. This is part of the regular replacement program of police cruisers not only replaced in this year 21. I believe both these cruisers have run over a hundred thousand miles. Thank you.
Would anyone in the hall like to be recognized?
Yes. This is a fire department. Act 13, Ward, brings reasonably appropriate fair stretch of available funds apart from the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars for the acquisition and equipment of the two police cruisers. Just to mention using free cash at all.
Transfer of available funds. Want to replay or review that?
Okay, just informed the motion as it is incorrect. It's not from free cash.
Okay, well, we moved and seconded free cash, so we need to amend that.
Make the motion to amend. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of ninety-five thousand for the acquisition and equipping of two police department crews. From Article 6.
Second. Can you put that right in for me, please? Is that okay with the Finance Committee? Five to zero. Does that mean with the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and I heard a second. Does anyone else should be heard on that? Please come up to the mic.
Name and address, please. Tina Santos, Mill Street. Although I do support our police officers, and I do support that they should be given their equipment properly and such. However, with the capital of ninety-five thousand, we do have other projects that are in dire need. They have had several vehicles that have been replaced and that have been purchased. So I guess my question is, is the DPW still leaking? That is leaking, from what I understand, for more than nine, ten years. And I think that was brought up last town meeting. We have the fire department that is not compliant with COE, with a lot of, with somebody, from what I understand, that was breastfeeding in the closet. Can we stick to the ninety-five thousand dollars? What I'm asking is, what I'm suggesting is, or I guess getting to, is that we have other projects that have been brought to town meeting, been put on the back burner, or that we have several projects that are in desperate need, that are either, you know, other projects that have been pushed forward, and, you know, this is kind of, we definitely need to, well, everybody needs to get a piece of the pie. I think it just, it really needs to be there. And, you know, we just spent eight-hundred thousand dollars on this athletic court, which I support it, but I feel that that ninety-five thousand would be supported towards our fire department, or for the LEW, for the DPW, or towards something else. You know, I really feel that we need to kind of make our projects fair. You know, we need to financially support every department, not just specific departments within our towns. And I, you know, I'm pretty supportive of everyone, but I think, you know, I've been coming to town meetings for quite some time, and it's getting really repetitive, and it's getting really old. We've talked about it numerous times, things are just getting pushed under the rug, and something needs to happen. So I'm really happy to have you on, Justin, so hopefully things will start to kind of, start moving along, because we need to get these other guys' projects to where they're focused.
Okay, does anyone else who should be heard? Okay, you are voting on the amendment, not the article, okay? The amendment is, if you please read it again?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from Article 6 the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars for the acquisition of equipment of two police cruisers. And Madam, may I ask one question about the?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. The ninety-five thousand dollars for the cruisers is being paid solely through the police station through their 911 regional dispatch. Years ago, it was on the books, you never saw it, but enough to be transparent, we moved that into the operating budget of the town so everyone could see what the police department was spending. We did talk to the DPW department about the DPW roof this year at Capital Plan. It was decided to be held on for maybe the fall. And the fire station, seventy-five thousand dollars, that's going to be put forward in the fall for another study to look at rebuilding the fire station, but not at a twelve-day long pause. We found that to be contrary to Capital Plan, and we'll be asking for a road pass auction for the fire station in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then we're not going to vote again on Article 13, because the amendment's the same thing as the revised Article 13. Is that okay? All right, with your favor. One is in favor of the article as presented. Two is opposed to the article as presented. Go. That's seventy-six percent in favor of the police cruisers, twenty-four percent opposed. This is a majority vote, the article passes. And I've been informed by our attorney that we don't need to re-vote Article 13, because the amendment was the same thing. Okay, Article 14, Chairman Barbara?
Thank you. I move that the town appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the upgrades of the electrical system and the installation of the fire suppression system at Fields Memorial Library. As a funding, therefore, that the treasurer will be approved by the Board of Select and be authorized to borrow from. And I'll be offering amendment in a minute, Madam Chair. Of three hundred thousand, an issuing warrant and notes stamped for pursuant to GLC 44, Section 87, or any other enabling authority, and the third, that any premium received by town upon the sale of any warrants are notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the insurance of such warrants or notes may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by the vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of General Law. Therefore, reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, like the amount further, that is what. The sum of three hundred thousand be appropriated from free cash to fund the balance of this request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 14. I hear it is an amendment coming from the Speaker.
Excuse me, thank you. I did inform this evening that Robinson Brothers gratefully awarded the library two hundred thousand dollars for repairs. So we'll be reducing the amount the town will borrow by two hundred thousand to a one hundred thousand dollar note, which will be absorbed in the budget over the next five years.
So we're second to amendment, a second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the article to change the borrowing from three hundred thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars, thanks to the Robinson Brothers Fund. Would you like to speak to that, or you have?
I have. We'd like to thank the Robinson Brothers for the generous donation of two hundred thousand dollars. As you know, the available moral library was built in the early nineteen hundreds. It has no fire suppression system. It is not in tube water. That's back in the nineteen hundreds when electricity first came out. We have a lot of artifacts, and a lot of books, and a lot of things that will be lost if that were to catch fire. This will bring us up to code, as you were so grateful in allowing us to put a disabled access to the elevator. This will bring us up to compliance with the fire code and the new electrical code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barbara. Would anyone else be heard on this article? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment first, and that's the last one that's read, changing the three hundred thousand to one hundred thousand. That is a majority vote. Okay, you see, you could use an amendment. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Go. And that shows ninety-two percent in favor, eighty percent opposed. The amendment passes. We will now go to approving Article 14 as amended with that one hundred thousand dollars. Okay, he said a reset of the computer. And this, because this is a borrowing item, needs to be a two-thirds vote. Tell me when you're ready. We're ready, okay. All votes in favor of Article 14 as amended, yes, number one. Number two, opposed, now. And this changed a little bit. It's ninety-three percent in favor, seven percent opposed. We offer that it passes by two-thirds. Okay, moving on. Article 15, Selectman, Chairman?
Thank you. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred and sixty thousand for the purpose of making repairs to Page 1 of three pages in the old Murdock Senior Center, including the payment of all costs incidentals related therefore. And as a funding thereof, that treasurer, if approved by the Board of Select, be authorized to borrow the said sum and issue warrants in notes that are pursuant to GLC 44, S7, or any other enabling authority. And further, that any other premium received by town upon the sale of any warrants are notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the insurance of such warrants or notes may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Law, thereby reducing the amount authorized to borrow to pay such costs by a length of amount further, that any grant fund received from this project will reduce the amount that is actually borrowed from this project. And I will be offering amendment after.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded to approve Article 15. And the amendment is?
Again, we'd like to really thank Robinson Brothers. They have awarded the Senior Center six hundred and four thousand dollars for repairs over the next two years. So it would be three hundred two thousand dollars each year, so we'll be reducing, I'll be offering the amendment to reduce the amount of borrowing by six hundred and four thousand dollars on such notes.
Second. Do you have a number on that, Finance Committee?
I show nine fifty-six, nine hundred and fifty-six pounds.
Nine fifty-six.
And that is to be absorbed in the budget by next week?
Let's, yeah.
Let me just finish here.
Fine as well.
Thank you. As Tommy requested last year, that the town vote get another way to fund repairs, this is going to be absorbed into the budget over the next ten years. It is built through Capital Plan. It is built as part of our bond for credit up in Thomas Dixon Park. We try to keep an equal balance. With the addition of the Robinson Brothers funding, it brings the borrowing note down substantially. Thank you.
And the vote of the Select on this article?
Five to zero.
And the vote of the Finance Committee on this article?
Four to one, sorry, Madam Chair, four to one.
Four to one, thank you.
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Five to zero, okay. You've already spoken on the amendment. Would anyone like to be heard on the amendment? Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Judy Gilbert. I live in, it's Twitch Drive. And I want to say that I do appreciate the Senior Center. I also want to know that it's not just for the seniors. The Senior Center helps with a lot of things, in paperwork for veterans. People work for the seniors. And I know on Tuesday, they receive five hundred pounds of food, which they distribute in one day. And this isn't just for the seniors, it's going to help everybody, especially during the pandemic, they were there for everybody. And personally, one of the persons who was in charge of the Senior Center advocates an interest in everybody who has been at the Senior Center. It's like one big family. She will call if he hasn't seen them or had a telephone. She'll call to see if they're okay. If he can't reach them, she'll actually get in their car and go to their house and make sure that they're all right. She's always assisting people. She is just one good thing for the Senior Center, mostly needed for not just the seniors, but everybody in this town benefits from that Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Yeah, Tina Santos, Mill Street. Can I ask who opposed, or why they opposed?
Thank you. I was wonderful opposed. And the reason I did is because at that time, we didn't have information about the Robinson Brothers grant. So I felt like I wanted to wait until we had the grant information. But now that we do, I don't have a problem.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, please. Name and address, please, if you can get up there.
In our, my dad. Thank you.
In our art, like we drive. My understanding was that there was a possibility that there were some matching funds from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for preservation funds. And I believe that we had to wait to find out if maybe that would be, would be able to match that. I wonder if we've got any more information as to whether we might be able to access those funds now.
If you turn around, the Town Manager has a response.
Thank you. There was a fifty thousand dollar grant from last year, which was held back, and the state has controlled that because the project was not approved. We will be in the process of requiring and seeing if they will release those funds. It was an additional fifty thousand dollars to that project.
Anyone else? Okay. We have an amendment to this article. If you vote the amendment, it's the same thing as the article, because we're going to change one number, right? So we'll do this in one vote, okay? All votes in favor of Article 15 with the change as amended, as requested for amendment to nine hundred fifty-six thousand dollars in line two, will vote yes for one, no for two. Go. Just as a note, I've been watching the responses and any questions. We have a hundred and twenty-four people in the hall this evening. Thank you for coming. Eighty-five percent in favor of Article 15 as we've not amended, and fifteen percent opposed. It needed a two-thirds vote, that the motion passes. And please be sure, if you see anybody on Robinson Brothers, that you thank them for the library and the old Murdoch donations. I know they appreciate hearing from you. Okay, Article 16, Chairman Barbara?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for purchase and install the emergency generator at Toy Town Elementary School or acting related there too.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 16 as read. I just want to count. Yes, okay. So we don't need to do an amendment. Would you like to speak to the motion, please, Mr. Barbara?
Thank you. The installation of emergency generator at Toy Town Elementary School provide for critical backup for the electronic communication system and enable the facility to be utilized as an emergency evacuation shelter area in times of emergency. This is the only building in the district that houses all the communications and the computer systems for the school department, and it's the only school that does not have an backup generator. Thank you.
The vote of the Select?
Five to zero.
And the vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends, five to zero.
Okay, okay. Does anybody wish to be heard on this article?
Madam Moderator? Someone?
Yes, Selectman.
Thank you. To this came before answer consideration, one question that was raised was, is the generator something that's going to be permanently at that building, or is it something that we do elsewhere? Who knows what's going to happen with Toy Town down the road? This will be a standard on the generator, sitting outside the ground, I imagine. So, you know, if down the road, we find that for whatever reason, we're going to need a good toy town manual, we can move it and move it someplace else within the town. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that information. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none. On Article 16, we press 1 for agree, press 2 for disagree, now. We have to reset, okay. I thought, it was wonderful, we had a percent for change. Okay, we have to do this one again, we have to reset, give it two seconds. Okay, we have to do this one again, we have to reset, give it two seconds. Are you ready, sir? One sec. Oh, nice picture. Okay. And all those in favor of Article sixteen is presented, one. All those opposed on Article sixteen, two. Vote and.
Something wrong with this slide. Is it going to add, or am I gonna have to do a flip? Okay. One more time, third time's a charm.
There we go, or bear with you. We're good, okay. All those in favor of Article sixteen is presented, one. All those opposed on Article sixteen, press two, go. And this has eighty-eight percent in favor, twelve percent opposed, it's a majority vote, this article passes. Article seventeen, Selectmen Laboring.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town appropriate a sum of eight hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing and updating water meters throughout the system, and as such, therefore, that the treasurer, with your previously voted selectmen, be authorized to borrow eight hundred thousand dollars and issue bonds and notes. Therefore, pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other enabling authority and further, the net premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accord to Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a lit amount, and that payments shall remain to the water enterprise fund.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article seventeen, the vote of the selectmen?
When suddenly voted to recommend this article, four to one.
And the vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended five to zero.
Thank you. Would the, make of the motion, would you like to speak to her motion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, I'm ongoing with leaders in town. Uh, what we're asking to approve tonight is upgrade and replacing, um, in some instances, the entire meter, in some instances only part of the meter. And the pieces we're gonna put in there, uh, actually, if I bring it, uh, the water meter systems into the twenty-first century, um, there'll be an app that you can download on the phone, if it detects unusual water usage or something unusual in the system, it will send out an alert. Uh, I believe it will also alert the EPW, is that correct? Yes. Um, so, uh, rather than someone going on vacation and coming back in two months and getting a water bill, uh, that zeros on to make them pass out, hopefully you catch up those issues at the very beginning. But there's issue both to support, so they can be a good thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the EPW director have been in the hall this evening? Mr. Crowder, would you like to speak to this? Or perhaps answer any questions with someone like that? Uh, the EPW director introducing himself as Brian.
It's pretty customary, this is a much needed one, three, to provide a better service to the residents. With awareness and waters being used, the current meters are about twelve years old, it's about the lifespan, the new ones are gonna last about that, maybe a little bit longer, but, uh, but this will allow us to get the system back up to great, and get a better handle on what's being used and where.
Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Crowder while he's here? Yes, would you please come up? Name and address, and, uh, when you watch the mic filming, you pull it up a little bit.
So, questions, uh, two questions, I guess, or one and a half, I guess. Um, there was, uh, somebody that opposed, so I wanted to ask whom I opposed, um, on the article. And then, um, Kim, I guess, um, you'd be going into the people's homes to be replacing them, and then you had just said, took, just a question, Brian, you mentioned that the new water meters would last about twelve years, so are you saying every twelve years we're gonna have to spend about eight hundred thousand or including pricing, um, out of our water enterprise to pay for a new water meter? Is that correct? Not? Because the town doesn't pay for it, us water users do.
Do you wanna answer first, or we number one, one voting yes?
I was the dissenting vote in recommending this article, because I think, um, the water in the summer fields have been rising astronomically, and until I did that study, I know exactly where I died and what's been spent in those enterprise funds, um, that we can't just use it as a, as a bid to do instead whatever we want, because it's not insurance by property and that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Crowder, you're up.
So I gave a range of about twelve years, um, the company, it has to go a bit, it has to go through a proper argument process, and in that process, depending on what company it is, the range from, it can be anywhere from twelve years to twenty years, depending on what vendor is selected, with what type of meter or electronics is selected. So, it's customary for them to last fifteen to twenty, I don't wanna make that guarantee, because these ones that we have now, it's supposed to last fifteen to twenty, and it's twelve, and everyone dead, so, um, that's what we do at that time when it opens the block, this is what we know, we know now this ain't fifteen to twenty, but I can't guarantee that.
Is that your answer, Santos?
So, are you gonna ask the hard question, why are you using, or gonna ask the question out each time?
Yes.
Along with fighters that are running along and.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this article? Seeing, uh, this is a two-thirds vote required, all those in favor of Article seventeen, on your clicker, press one. Polling is closed, sixty-two percent yes, thirty-eight percent no, that is less than two-thirds, the motion is defeated. Okay, Article eighteen, since I turned my page. Article eighteen, question for board, please.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote is ready to incorporate or transfer from available funds to a sum of forty thousand dollars for design costs required as part of various grant submissions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, uh, did you leave out the words free cash?
Yes, that was a mistake.
That was a mistake, okay. Okay, so moved and seconded to approve Article eighteen minus the words from free cash. Vote of the selectmen?
Selectmen recommend four one.
And the vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved five to zero.
Thank you. Would the maker of the motion like to speak to the article?
Madam Moderator. Design costs are often required as part of a transportation roadway application program. Without a readily available source of funds, the design costs are often charged to the only available eligible source of funds, and those are the Chapter ninety roads fund, which if utilized for design, would not be available for necessary road maintenance. So this, this article takes that, that, that money for design costs away from those Chapter ninety funds, so that Chapter ninety funding is entirely for the roads.
Thank you for your explanation. Does anyone wish to be heard on this article? Name and address. Please.
Okay. Danielle White, Central Street. Um, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I have a grant guru coming on staff, has come on staff with us today. So I'm wondering, um, part of me would like to wait until we actually apply the grants in the volume that we should before we allocate any more money to this, or maybe put that toward a salary for a grant writer, um, but I would like to ask our new town manager if, um, if he would see this as an added benefit at this time to us, or possibly waiting for a year until we get a handle on, on what grants are out there, but we can do what we need, that's what I think.
Thank you. Would our new town manager like to speak?
Thank you for the question, and to reiterate, reiterating what selection more mentioned, oftentimes with these grants, particularly through MassOP, there is an expectation that we have, um, a certain percentage of design in hand to comply, so we'd have to look at the full plan, that they would anticipate us to have about twenty-five percent lockout, um, but it's my understanding that this forty thousand dollars would cover that, so we'd have that passed in hand to get that twenty-five percent designs, or we could then apply, um, which is kind of the order typically goes with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, use your clicker, for Article eighteen, remembering the words from free cash are not included in that written proposal, and yes is one, We have seventy-five percent in favor, twenty-five percent opposed, the article passes, it's a majority vote. Chairman Barbara.
Thank you, Madam. I move the town vote to accept Melon Road as a public town way for the purpose and customary as a public way to do the maintenance and repair, and the location laid out by the board of selectmen on plan note that Melon Road, Road Day Acceptance Plan dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and drawn by the cotton engineering incorporated, the preference noted as suddenly ordered at five sixty-five Melon Road, extended north lead to two fifteen Melon Road, set layout cabinet placed on file with the town clerk.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept Article number nineteen. Would the maker of the motion like to speak to, oh, wait, nothing for that. Vote of the selectmen?
Three to one.
Okay. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended four, zero, one extension.
Thank you very much. Now, would the speaker like to?
Thank you.
Speak.
As noted, this article will accept Melon Road as a public town way. Easements would need to be obtained, and a special act of legislation would be also needed within a hundred and twenty days passage of this article in order for this article to take effect. Uh, as we, we're here last year, this town voted to fund, be paid and weighing out of Melon Road to be accepted as a town road. This is the follow-up to that, and Article twenty will be the special legislation needed to get that through the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard? I see I'm way up here, come on up. Name and address, when you get up here. Please.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, Article number two-four-five, Melon Road. I cannot vote for this article, it's too cautious, because if I vote for this for it, it negates our arguments, the town's position is deemed inaccurate. We have provided, uh, Article at the end, twenty-four, that is a non, provides a non-law word, that we're not getting rid of our rights to defend ourselves. Basically, if I vote for this, I'll be lying, that I believe the town's correct in their stance on the road, and I don't believe that based on evidence and based on two attorneys. And, uh, also, the wording on this goes to two fifteen Melon Road, and we probably put the board interpreting propositions to pass. It is not going to pass two fifteen, so is it going to the order at the end of two fifteen, or is it going to the starting end of two fifteen? And I have here, this, this kind of applies to the next article, but I have here, uh, shenanigans.
Your voice isn't in the article, it's a.
Well, it just, it does apply to this, because.
Okay, as long as you're on the article, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, so Tracy Murphy, the Director of the Planning Board, I have an internal video of hers here, where she says that they're gonna amend, alter plans to not include the end of the road. Now, what that will do is it will take away the end of the road where the school bus got stopped last year, and where the fire department has made it, there's a fire company around, and safety gate will be entered. It's absurd that they want to accept up to that property and not pass it, and despite whatever challenges it may provide us tonight, the wording says to, not pass, or to the end of, our, our twenty-four article does seek the end of the pavement, it's very explicit, there's no confusion as what happened with what's been went on for the last few years. We're trying to prevent that, and this article will help prevent that, and I will not lie, is that my position is wrong, but I know that my position is wrong. Now, do, should I speak on Article twenty-one here?
Not yet, please. Now, are you making an amendment to this motion?
I, I, I say I do not vote for it.
Okay, so you're not amending?
No.
Okay, all right.
I, I, we've never heard it in the end.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to be sure you weren't making an amendment or anything more.
Thank you, I'll be back in a minute.
Okay. Mind if I have a front seat, if you're gonna stay for the next one? Does anyone else wish to be heard? I keep looking at him, because I think he's gonna get up and speak. Okay, Article nineteen is before you, all those in favor of Article nineteen as presented, will signify with a one, all those opposed will signify with a two, now. Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote, it's forty-nine percent in favor, fifty-one percent opposed, the article does not pass. Okay. Next article, number twenty.
Thank you.
Chairman Barbara, would you please read it?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the town vote otherwise of what selectmen to apply by purchase gift or eminent demand or otherwise to public way purposes, easement to other interests in the land and location, more or less affected as Melon Road on the planning title, Melon Road Acceptance Plan dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Asset plan may be amended in copy which is placed on file with the town clerk, to enable the town to lay out and accept said Melon Road as a public way in town, and to purport to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen petition to general court for special registration of the form set forth below, providing that the general court shall make changes of the form only to bill unless the board of selectmen approve amendments to the bill therefore enacted by the general court within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and to authorize board of selectmen to approve such amendment or take any other actions thereof.
Are you going to continue?
An act authorized that contains the land and easement and land in the town of Wichita in Section one, not which standard Section thirty-two to thirty-seven of Chapter seven C of General Laws, or any other general or special law to the contrary, the division of capital assets management and maintenance in consultation with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, may compete, conveys the town of Wichita as a permanent easement for public way purpose and existentially identified as Melon Road on the way of showing prepared by the town as a box land known as the Wichita State Forest, located in town, which is man under care and control of the Department and Health of Conservation and Recreation purposes, as identified on the town Wichita assessment map as browser twelve, dash zero, dash thirty-seven, subject to such additional terms and conditions, consistent with the Act, as Commissioner of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance, in consultation with the Commission. Okay. I still got more to talk about. I still got more to talk about there. Of Conservation and Recreation may describe. The deed or other instructions contained to our easements to the town of Wichita shall provide that the easement shall be used solely for public way purposes. Section 2, notwithstanding any general or special law or the contrary, the town of Wichita shall be responsible for all the parts and expenditures of the demands on the easement of the town for swing to Section 1 of this Act as determined by the Commissioner of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance, which shall include without limitation cost engineering surveys, according to deep preparations related to the demands of said parcels to the town of Wichita.
Do I have a second? I have a second. It's been moved and seconded to accept Article number 20 as read. Vote of the Selectmen?
Three, one, one.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended four, zero, with one extension.
Thank you very much. Would the maker of the motion like to speak some more?
Oh, sure. If Article 19 and 24 of this article were approved and with easements or special act were obtained, there would be no need to return to the Wichita State meeting for a formal acceptance of the road up to a public town way unless the easements or special act are not obtained within 120 days. Basically, what this says is this allows us to go to the legislature to get the state forests that's on that road to give us an easement. So either Article 19, which you have, or 24, which comes up, need this article to pass. Without that article, neither one of these articles will be bound to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorwitt, I have a second. Name and address.
I'm here from Melon Road, 245. Thank you, Madam Moderator. First off, I'm sorry you're still doing with it. We asked you to vote for a simple resolution that was probable last year, and the town voted in super large numbers and held us out, and we're grateful for that, but the board did not listen to us. We said that you can make it a road by prescription, and the town voted to do that, but the board has retroactiveized it, let it to fulfill the mandate of the people. This article is in pursuit, pursuant to their plan, that costs more money, and it's gonna set a precedent that this is gonna have to happen on all AMR roads in town. There are thousands of AMR properties in town. And the next time we get an AMR or a district in town, we're gonna have this problem over and over again. We've provided a simple solution, which is to recognize it as a road by prescription, and this is done. I have here the town's attorneys standing and writing that the town can't change it as a road by prescription, but it's a simple, done, it's done. It's in writing, and I've got this up before, and it's never been reviewed. I don't understand why the town can't even listen to its lawyers. But there's some reasons why their plan will not work. There's, as Tracy Murphy said, they're not even going after the issues in wildlife or any things that will be necessary to accept the road. That's in writing. They are going after the DCR, the DCRs are granting easements to the road. The DCRs get open and writing, and they do not have custody or anything to do with Melon Road or the land it sits on. The town has not been able to contact the DCR. They haven't committed to deal with them. I have, and they gave me a written statement. They don't have custody of the land. They cannot grant easement to something that they don't have a legal already, and they can't grant easement to something they don't have custody of or ownership of. Their, this solution is a dead end. It's going nowhere. They're also asking us to grant easements, the butters. We cannot do that because we don't believe we have the land. In fact, we have deeds that show that somebody else owns the land. The lawyers for the town have that right to, to say that the butters own all of the land. The lawyers do say things like they don't know where the road was when that deed was done, and that's their excuse for sticking to this court. We do know where the road was. It hasn't moved in hundreds of years. It's between ancient walls that have been there for hundreds of years. We know where the road is. It hasn't moved. The simplest solution is to recognize the road by prescription as the terms have said is done legally, and then to vote for 24 to accept it, which will enable Brian, who's trying to get more funding for the town, to apply for, for growth. If we have an acceptance, we can go to the state, we can go to the DOT and say, here's the road and the map, and here's the acceptance, the town meeting. The DOT will modify their list, and then you can give the chapter 90 money for it. I know this because I spoke to the state. They called me, and I left a message, they called me the next day. They're easy to talk to. We've been told that they're not, but they are. This is all that needs to happen, prescription, like we asked you to do last year, and then just vote for 24 so it's on paper to the Brian, go after the chapter 90 money, and we're done. If we go down this route, they're not gonna get these acres of land that somebody says they don't own in 120 days, and they're not even going after all of these, as Tracy Murphy said in writing. These shenanigans, we need to end. We've got a simple solution, gave to you last year. Why won't we listen? I provided all this information. Please, do the simple thing. Don't open up a candlework on all the AMR roads, the Bunnigan and other properties, and go after it dispatching. It's expensive, and it's wasteful. It sets a bad precedent for getting more money in the chapter 90, and it's a bad precedent for spending money for no reason. Please, please do the right thing. Quit holding to your guns as if it's a personal attack on you for us asking you to do the right thing. It's not personal. But when you value our property by tens of thousands of dollars, when you violate the law to do so, and you fight three years in a row, maybe it is personal. But can we just not watch these shenanigans? Can we not have internal documents? Go to the DCR or the Director of the Planning Board, ask shenanigans? Come on.
I have a strong understanding, yes.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to have the survivor's response to Article.
Sir, Madam Moderator, I don't have a look to the background on this, as some others in my office, but two things. We do, there are family records showing the Melon Road was discontinued, voted the town a little over 100 years ago, and did not have the same kind of record that it may publicly have. And my understanding of a road being satisfied by prescription is it's really not black and white, and without a court order declaring that it has become public by prescription, it really is not something you can rely on. That's about all I have to say about it.
Name and address, please. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Daniel McLean, Central Street.
So I was kind of hoping that this would just all be resolved, and it wouldn't be something that I had to get in the middle of tomorrow. I'm just gonna put my opinion out there. I feel like we're putting so much effort into fighting about this and drawing lines and, given that there were minutes that were published where the conversation was written on memory saying, we don't want to set an example, town government, showing that our citizens and our residents can, you know, go down this road and have us pay money to take care of our things. I really think we need to draw our line in the sand, saying, how can this government best take care of our citizens while also keeping our budget in mind? And I just think, I would implore everyone to decline this question, approve 24, and just show, you know, that the board that I will be sitting on tomorrow is here for these people and not just for these people themselves.
Mark Rorwer of Melon Road, I guess I'm gonna have to go into a log bar, into the log bar. The town way treat, the way is public based on evidence presented to you that the way has become public through diverse use. We have presented that evidence, our butters have presented that evidence. Breaking to the 1914 decisions of Melon Road, it was a moot point because things changed in 1914. The town filed a law to cease maintenance on the road. You cannot have an AMR property, you're not required, on a road that is not maintained by the town. It's illegal. The town ceased maintenance on it, and that's why we had to pay those citizens to the health and the handout there. And, I mean, really, Brian, I have to read you what your firm said about this. Should I read all of it about prescription, or can you just accept that you don't know land law, you said that Melon Road?
Excuse me, no comments unless you're with the microphone.
Hope you read how roads can be laid out? I probably don't have to go through it. I probably just move on.
Can you summarize?
Vote for 24, don't vote for this one, and the new board will make it a road by prescription as they legally can, as the town's firm has said, Brian has the camera. And then, Brian can get his money, because he's got the vote of the chapter 8, and we're done. Thank you.
I see you. I heard a voice from up there.
I'm Jeff. So this is just a confusion of what's going on here, so let me break you back to how this all came about. In the early 90s, a agreement presented to the town, which had been the builder of all the houses on Melon Road. In that agreement, the builder and the town took into an agreement as far as the builder paid the town to put the groundwork of the road and lay the road up. The second part of the agreement that the contractor entered into, which was the town was, as he sold his plot, he would put money into the town, and that money would be held until all the lots were built, and then pay the town the money to put the hot pot, the second coat on the road. The contractor never did that, never put any money into any account for the town to prove that money he paid was to put the second coat on. Partly, part of the town thought was they had the fallout line. The road was discontinued. It has not been taken by prescription, and will not, because it gets tied up by court for over two years, so we can be here for two years. The way we play out, Article 20 allows us to go to the General Court and get this done, and now the Article 24 will pass, will allow us to get this resolved as we farm this year. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Yes, hi. David Watkins, 235 Melon Road. So I have a question for the town's attorneys, Mr. Riley. He mentions the discontinued portion of the road. I'm not sure he totally understands the situation. We're here to accept all of Melon Road, from the garden line to the end of Melon Road, the 215. I'm not sure anybody here really understands that. Last year, we were here to discuss the discontinued portion of Melon Road. We feel that we've given all the documents necessary to prove that the agreement that was made with the town superseded the discontinueance. Now, once again, Mr. Riley, you may mention a discontinued part of the road. We're here for the other end of Melon Road that was never discontinued. You know why? Because documents cannot be provided showing that it was never properly accepted. Well, in the town hall, I was told by several people, I was told by the former DPW attorney, I have neighbors that have told me the very same thing, documents don't exist because they're shredded. I also was told by the building that that's impossible, those documents cannot be shredded. So I was told by the tax assessor, when I was there looking for documents, they were lost in the flood. They were in the basement in the flood. Come on. Documents just don't disappear. Poor handling of documents, as much has happened in this town. These documents exist. We have documentation stating that Melon Road was always a town road. That was written by the attorney in 2008. A lot of the town manager at that time, Melon Road was always considered a town road. This is money that's been spent unnecessarily. It's gonna go again and again. If we go with these easements, there is a plan B by the town's attorneys. I read it. Plan B is, if we're unable, unsuccessful, to get these documents, easements, then we will need title searches for all of these documents. It's stated in that document, it's going to be very lengthy process and very expensive. So what do we want to do here? Do we want to just spend all this money unnecessarily? Or do we want to get this voted by a surgeon? This road fulfills all of that. I've heard some opinions in Boston, the Melon Road residents hired those attorneys. Those attorneys are bad. This is a road by prescription. Mr. Riley does not know what he's talking about, he's admitted it. He certainly doesn't know about all of Melon Road being the whole. It's not the discontinued portion. It's the entire road. We all need to understand what's going on here. This is the town blocking the wall once again. This is the town's attorneys advising on one thing and doing another. We cannot allow them to title search us. This is gonna cost a ton of money. We cannot allow that. We need this to go as a road by prescription. It's the simplest way. It costs no extra money for this. And the town's attorneys don't give a inch of a word, because I understand title searches can be very lengthy. I've been involved in that myself. It can go on and on and on, and in the burden of the burden of what they find out is, ah, we've researched about 100 years. I guess, I guess we're good. But they received all these funds to do that research. But all I really want to say is, we gotta stop spending money here. Thank you very much. And also, thank you very much, my Melon Road has been beautifully paved, and that was accomplished at the town meeting last year, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the building, in the hall, who would like to be heard? Madam Moderator? Yes, Mr. Board.
First of all, I would just say, there's nothing personal of this. I don't have any personal feeling in my way of the object, so put that to rest right now. The reason that I think we shouldn't pass 20 is because that's the first step in doing this right. In 1914, you, the residents of this town at our meeting, discontinued that section of Melon Road as a town road. It was, so it was voted no in 1914. I don't believe that you should be given the authority to a board of selectmen to decide which part of roads are going to be accepted by this town or not accepted. This is up to you to vote. Article 20 is the first step. Once those are done, now that Article 19 failed, we will have to come back at the next town meeting to accept that road. So I'm just asking you to support 20 so we can get on with this.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? I see him coming down the aisle. Name and address, please, if you can get up to my table.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. East Musgrave Grove, 535 Melon Road. First of all, thank you, everybody, last year for voting to help put the layers on the Melon Road where it's really got. And I invite you, any one of you on a Sunday drive, it's a really nice drive, come out our way, come up, and it connects to Fox Street, which turns into Howard Street. Howard Street's the beginning of the road on the garden side, and then Melon Road. Take a drive down the road. Just take, take a Sunday drive and see what it looks like, see what it feels like. I live on the end closest to the garden line. It's floral. It's absolutely floral. The end that was paved, that's wonderful. If you drive all the way down, it's a long, long road. This is not a private road. I lived there for 24 years. 24 years, it's not private. When we go to our house, we are not told it's private, there's no documentation that we have that says it is a non-private road. And so I am not voting for favor 20. I will vote in favor of 24. I ask you to please do the same thing so that we can just get this over with, that it can be simple, we can not cost any of us a lot of money and more time. So thank you.
Have there any more comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 20 as read, all the pages of it, will press one. All of those opposed will press two. This is a majority vote. It is the majority vote asking for money from the common law. Vote now. And we have 37% in favor, 63% oppose, the article does not pass. Article 21, select person, Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I note that the town votes were submitted to general law chapter 43d, section 10a. Limited town charter is recommended by the Charter by Law Review Committee, and a document entitled 2021 Proposed Charter Division on file in the office of the town clerk and available on the town's website at www.townfunctioning.com. With text to be inserted, underlined, and text to be deleted shown in the margins.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 21 with the makeup motion here to speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The revisions include, but are not limited to ministerial and clerical amendments such as grammar, capitalization, gender neutrality, internal consistency, emergency due, and updates based upon state law and other matters. If approved, the charter amendments will also need to be approved by a majority vote at the 2022 annual town election to become effective.
Thank you. Vote of the selectmen?
Five to zero.
Five to zero. Vote of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends five to zero.
Five to zero. I have a note on here. Chairman Ward, would you like to speak on this?
For the charter, the only major changes were committees that were added. We added the communication committee, the cultural council, the fence viewer field driver, the recreation commission, the environmental certifying officers, and the board appointments to offices and member bodies.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this article? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Don. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Article 21 as presented, 1 is yes, 2 is no. Vote now. And 88% are in favor, 12% opposed. That is a majority vote, and it does pass. Article 22, selectmen and electors?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town function as recommended by the Charter by Law Review Committee, and a document entitled 2021 Proposed Bylaw Divisions on file in the office of the town clerk and available on the town's website at http://www.townfunctioning.com with text to be inserted, underlined, and text to be deleted shown in the margins.
Go ahead, your second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 22 as presented. Vote of the selectmen?
Order second recommends approving this article, five to zero.
Thank you. Board of vote of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. Would the makeup motion like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There's similar to Article 21 that was approved, just as just as the changes made to the bylaws that the Charter by Law Review Committee has been working on the past months, clerical amendments, grammar, et cetera. There were certain substantive, I'm not saying that right, revisions, which is an update and a replacement of Articles 12 and 31 per mass general law, for the clarified language and other matters.
Thank you. Chairman Ward?
The only other thing was section 1, right now the town says, book of the articles to every registered household voter in the town, and that costs between $5,000 and $7,000. Our recommendation was to postcard go to every resident with an email, a phone number, a way to contact, and if they wanted an actual copy of the articles, we would make arrangements to send them on. We thought that savings would be somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000. And there were some revisions to the animal control, Article 17, clarification of when a dog is seen with public nuisance, disposition penalties in the county of such dogs, because that's always a problem when the officer has to go and the dog is a public nuisance and that had nothing to do with it.
Does anyone have any questions or input on this article? Yes. Name and address, please.
In on Arthur, Lakeview Drive. Just two quick questions. One is, how soon does the new bylaws take effect, are they considered to be in effect? And how soon will the final version of the new document be available to the public on the website? Thank you. Someone have an answer to those questions?
I know that they have to go to legislation, and we are hoping that it will be before they went for recess this year, like this time guarantee.
To be right, my, due to the general bylaws of the town, and so they're approved tonight, the change is actually sent to the Attorney General's office. They have 90 days to review and approve, often they don't get that long. Then they just have to get published in sort of the same fashion that a town warrant gets approved, and then they become effective as of then. And when copies are revised, files will be available in a rush.
Is that okay? Thank you. Anyone else? I'm here. Oh, sorry, I'm on it.
To our Chief of Chair, to our Attorney General. Should the Attorney General make a change to it, or are others to say, yes, this is all right? Do we have to revisit it at another town meeting? Or how do we handle any changes that they feel are being made?
Occasionally, the Attorney General's office will disapprove a change, saying really the only reason is that it's inconsistent with state law. So that one, we would have to think about it and try again. I read through the changes that are being proposed, and I really want to start by that.
Thank you. Don, I see four responses on Article 22. Okay, can you erase those? Thank you. Does anyone else have any additional questions? Okay, on Article 22, all those in favor of Article 22 as read, 1 is yes, 2 is no. Please vote now. And we have 89% in favor, 11% opposed, the majority vote carries. Okay, Article 23, Chairman Vice President Ward?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from John D. Walker or from the then current owners pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 60, Section 77c, to three parcels of land identified as one, assessed at map 144-0-11, being .14 acres, more or less located on Hall Street; two, assessed at map 2-0-72, being .15 acres, more or less located on Lincoln Avenue; and three, assessed at map 2-0-77, being .30 acres, more or less located on Lincoln Avenue. Said property described in a deed recorded with the wish of self-registration of deeds in book 4810, page 40, which parcels are subject to tax takings held by the treasurer, collector, or unpaid real estate actions, said parcels will be under the clear custody, control, and management of the board of selection for general municipal purposes, and will authorize the board of selection to accept and record the deed, provided the board of selection determines that the deed and the acceptance will comply with the provisions of General Law Chapter 60, Section 77c.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept Article number 23 as read. Report of the selectmen?
Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Thank you. Board of Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends five to zero.
Would the makeup motion like to speak?
Thank you. This article is seeking authorization to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from an individual who had purchased these parcels that were in tax title in the 1960s. It turns out that parcels had very little value to the buyer. Whereas they vote for a parcel that would be passed to both the town and the owner of the parcels, the owner is requesting that the town accept the deed in lieu of foreclosure to resolve this matter.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Yes. And would you give the mic, name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Susan Berto, 81, North Carolina. Just some general questions. I'm not aware specifically where this is, but I have, the members of the board, before they argument this, have they actually bought this property to make sure that it's not, you know, accepting something that kind of seems to be attractive on the site?
Does anyone have an answer to that question?
All I know is I do enough by the area. I'm just identifying, identifying that with discipline is very difficult.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 23 as presented, 1 for yes, 2 for no. Vote now. And, I'm sleepy. 82% in favor of yes, 18% opposed, no. This is a majority vote, and it passes. Last article needing votes. Article 24, it's a citizen petition, therefore the selectmen do not move the article, so I'm assuming the person coming up will vote. The sidewalk here is going to make the motion.
I have a, thank you.
Name and address, please.
Park Road and Melon Road. I do have some type of, if you try to get bits into the sidewalk, it's really, it looks a lot loud, and I was wondering if I could hand that over now? And if I should be on the for you there, or have there? I could just show you, I could just point you and show you the sidewalk.
I'll do it after.
The residents of Melon Road are not waiting. Earlier public reservations, recognitions, A and R, public nature.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I don't see that here. We need that? I don't see that here in the petition. Is that there? Okay, can you make sure we get the copy up here? It's in the warrant? Okay. Okay, town board has, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. The residents of Melon Road are not waiting. Earlier public reservations, recognitions, A and R, public nature by prescription, and/or other actions, permissions, and/or statements that the road is a public way, and the residents of Melon Road reserve all remedies to the town function and attempting to change positions, including but not limited to damages and uncertainties. Subject to four-way reservations and notice of nonwaiver, in order to stop the town function and from continuing to void its obligations, the residents of Melon Road hereby present this petition, petition subject to notice of nonwaiver. To see if the town will vote to accept Melon Road from the southern border of Washington Town Line adjacent to the property number 565, extending to the northern coast of the order of property 215 to the end of New Haven, as shown on the existing petition plan 204 to 405 Melon Road, Washington, Massachusetts, prepared for the party companies by top office surveying, file number 2383215405 Melon Road. Washington, for all purposes for which the public ways are used in the town of Washington and for the purpose of maintenance and repair.
Go ahead, your second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Article number 24. Mr. George, the only thing I caught was there was a missing word to the, between extending and northern.
Correct, that's it, and then Melon Road is spelled AC.
Okay, but it's pronounced the same way.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so which you, uh...
So I, I, I still got it for a second. Just to clarify, a month ago, the chair of the board said that, that when the DCR came to talk about Melon Road, he had a document saying that it was a town road, number 565. The lawyer is now saying that it's discontinued in 1914, just to point out the survey. Which is it?
Do you want me to respond?
No. Here's a rhetorical question, thank you very much.
You certainly may respond, you asked your question.
First of all, I never said, let me repeat myself, I never said that there's a document. I said, in 1965, at a town meeting, the town voted to give the parts to the state. I said also that there has to be a document somewhere. That's what I said. I did not say anything else. So please, sir, do not put words in my mouth.
With all respect, I don't want to hear a word of it. Also, put the words in your mouth. You did say that Melon Road had a manhole cover and it was near the town, but let's not get into that, that's, those lies made in here.
That really has nothing to do with the article.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm unsure if, because of the citizen's petition, whether there was a vote from the selectmen? There was no vote.
There was a vote from the board of selectmen, not from our command, 511.
Okay, and how about the finances? The Finance Committee voted not to recommend 4011. Thank you. Does anyone else in the hall wish to be heard? Selectman?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just to clarify some of the terms, and that may be part of the confusion. We've got private way, we've got public road, and we have accepted road. Just because a road is public, doesn't mean the town has officially accepted it and added it to its official list of, of roads that we put to the state and get our chapter 95, 95. So there's, it's, it's not, it's a public road. It can be, something can be a public road, but not accepted. So that's, that's, you know, clarifies some of the terminology. It's that accepted part that we're trying to get through now in the closing procedure in order to, thank you, if you care.
I see a hand way up, come on up, and then I will get to our hand somewhere. And again, because I'm so bad at names, name and address, so we can get up to the mic, please.
David Watkins, 235 Melon Road. So I was just elaborating or arguing, saying about accepted roads, roads that are town roads, public roads. Once again, we requested Melon Road action, we requested documents just showing which roads in town were accepted roads, collecting the chapter 90. Now, one of them, of course, we all know from last year, was Central Street. So Central Street was apparently never accepted. There's no documents. Documents, I guess, exist, but they weren't receiving chapter 90, even though it wasn't an accepted road, which I find very interesting, and it's, once again, not true to roads equally. Now, Melon Road, the acceptance of Melon Road, the discontinuance of Melon Road, the idea that the chapter 90 documents, I had it about Melon Road, and it's handwritten on the line whether it's accepted or not, receiving chapter 90 or not, it's handwritten, and it says, "The part that was discontinued is not." Then it goes on and says the wording, "Some of it." Then it goes on and says, "The wording, 'some of it.'" What does that mean? These are documents the town is going by, the chapter ninety, this document says "some of it"? It's not giving any locations, it's just saying "some of it." Now, Melon Road goes from Carver Line, all the way down to two fifteen, and then it ends up in the woods, and picks up again on the other side of town five, where I think there are about three houses. I think I found out that that dirt path is accepted. I also think I found out that there is no proper documents for road acceptances. When it's handwritten in, and it's saying "some of it", or just the wording "yes", "no" with a slash, what does that mean? How do we know if it's not by a document that can be understood? Now, I've asked our GPW Director Brian about these documents, and he stated that's when he goes, this is all he has. Now, what really has to happen here is these documents have to have all clarification. What part, why can't we have post numbers? So, once again, in the spring, all of a sudden, the other end of Melon Road, the end that goes all the way to Carver, is, has become apparently unacceptable and moved, there's no document. But the document I have says "some of it." Now, why can't that interpret it that way, that "some of it"? It just makes absolutely no sense. We're sitting here tonight, and we're voting on something that we don't know whether it's been accepted and town's expense, once again, these are documents that have to be presented to the town attorneys, have to write this stuff up, and here we sit, spending more money on something that's more than likely been done and washed in the flood? Or shredded, is what I've been told, that twenties documents don't exist? But yet, we have to just continue or redo? Makes no sense, again and again, "some of it." That just sticks in my mind, "some of it," which part? I mean, we need to get by this. If I had to choose parts of all these roads, these documents cover everywhere over town. So I agree with them, and it's just absurd the way that they listen on this. And this is how chapter ninety-thirty is gotten through the state? So we need that money to help repair our roads, which would dire me. If we can't keep up with the road repair, then we're not even going to be able to drive to town. So I think this all needs to be looked into, and has to be looked into, these documents. That we're all going by, the town's going by, the town's attorneys are going by, everybody has an opinion. It's just not good enough for me. Some of it is just not good enough for me. I think everybody needs to think and understand about their own roads, the way they are listening. Are they listed properly? Are they listed legally? Where are the documents that show this? Nobody knows about a great portion of those documents, isn't that fine? That's all it has, thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw your name, name and address, so you can get up to the mic, please.
Lisa Barbour, Brown Street. I just, first of all, I just want to say, you know, I really want these people to get their roads straight away. But there's something in here that kind of just strikes me, concerns me, where it says that they reserve remedies, including but not limited to damages and attorneys' fees. And I'm just wondering what we're potentially getting ourselves into pain, that's all.
Mr. Kane, and then I'll give you my next question.
I don't have a dialogue, sorry. But I've been listening to it for the last year and a year and a half. And I think we've come a long way from, all we want is to have the pockets. We've moved as a town along, I swear to God. We proved last year, money not just to fix the files, but to pay for roads. And to do the work that we need to do to accept the road as a public road in town. This year, we've got three articles that deal with this issue. First rule, first rule is, I think, proposed originally by residents of Melon Road, which they now ask us to vote yes. This article that we're discussing now, basically says the same thing as Article twenty-nine. Accepted reserves, or I misspoke, direction to sue the town. And seemingly, what it's suggesting is, if they don't do it our way. Now, there's a lot of opinions here, there's a lot of thoughts about whether the town should accept the road by prescription, that's an opinion, that's, and I know that the residents of Melon Road, they're very strongly about that opinion. But there are opinions in town too, that suggest, well, if we just take that down by prescription, that road by prescription, what about all the other roads in town that are accepted roads? So, it seems to be, the proof they can tell to do is to follow the rules that they believe we have to follow. And go through this, which is what Article ten is all about. Go to a legislator, get the easements CD, and the state decides and move forward. I don't know what documents we're looking for, and it seems to be the article now, isn't whether to approve the road or not, it's by which method we approve the road. Do we follow the sets that we believe the state requires us to do? Or do we follow the opinion that, no, we just vote to take it by prescription? Actually, it's the board, the Selectmen, that can vote to take it by prescription. So I'm not in favor of this at all.
Article twenty-four five. I think, there actually is a confusion in the beginning.
I'm sorry?
I think, I think there is a certain beginning confusion. We're not trying to see the town, we're not trying to force the town to do it our way. We're trying to make the town do it any way that it will work. The Article twenty version will not work. And I don't know why it's so hard to explain this, but their version is going after esences from entities that cannot grant esences to that property because they had them a month ago. The DCR is not magically going to resist on their statement that they made in writing. They're not magically going to say, "Oh, we were wrong, because we spent, some are talking about this." It's not going to happen the twenty way, we're asking for it happen anyway. And to answer Lisa, we're not trying to see the town, we spent three years fighting this in order not to sue the town. David and I sat up here and gone to many meetings talking about the cheapest way to solve the problem. We've done that over and over and over again. The Select Board had an unlawfully held executive session where they strategized on how cheapst way they can do what this is in light of their understanding of the political laws. That's in writing. That was an unlawfully held executive session where they made that, they strategized about that. I have that in writing. They approved those minutes where they said that. The AG said it was an unlawfully held executive session. We're just having to get it done, we're not trying to sue the town. If we sue the town, it's going to wind up with two years of depositions, and people on town salarying the city in offices getting grilled by our lawyers. Do you think this guy can defend his town?
Can you answer me what this has to do with this question?
I'm answering these two.
I don't see how this has anything to do with this question.
Okay, I feel like I need to answer that question, thank you.
Call the vote.
Okay, I've heard a call from the vote. And I don't see anybody else standing up to say anything, so let's go for the vote. This requires two-thirds vote, by the way. If, and I see there's already someone who's responded, can you clear the screen, please? Okay, okay. All those in favor of Article twenty-four as read? Press one for yes, press two for no, now. Okay, fifty-nine percent yes, forty-one percent no. It's a two-thirds vote, as I said, it does not pass.
Point of order?
Yes, what is your point of order, please?
According to law, it says majority.
I'm sorry, I think you need to come up to the microphone, you name address, so I can hear you. So two-thirds required, am I right? It says majority, okay, can you clarify?
Gentlemen, Honorable, by statute, the town needs approving a public way, accepting a public way, that's on a separated plan, approved or planned board. That is a very good, any other kind is a two-thirds vote.
Does that answer your question, or you have another one? Name and address, please.
Michael Kelly, five twenty-five Melon Road. This is what he will talk, correct?
I don't know which one you're looking at.
It's, it's the town board, they're able to outvote those.
Okay, yes, this one?
Majority vote required.
Okay, I'll handle that, sir. I'm sorry, I can't hear people saying something. If you have something to say, just come up to the microphone, otherwise I can't, I can't hear you. Okay, the article as printed says majority vote required. I did announce two-thirds vote, didn't I? When I began? Yes, okay, according to the attorney, it was a two-thirds vote. And I see a hand raised, so I see several hands raised, okay. If you have a point of order, let me speak to that point of order.
Name and address, please, Tina Sancho, Smol Street. According to the special town meeting law and articles that they're mailing home, it says, majority vote required. What you guys, what was printed and handed out this evening, majority vote required. I'm not sure what you have in front of you, but it all says, majority vote. So I think that needs to be honored.
Okay, well, sorry about that, mine says two-thirds. The attorney has told me to go with the vote. Fifty-nine percent in favor, forty-one percent opposed, the eye pack.
These poor people! You guys are doing it together now!
Steve's name, Andrew Washington, Fisher.
Welcome to Georgia.
Is that it? Steve is here, relax and relax.
So all together, we take your bond money, we gather the crew, and F Y twenty-one, and the bond money that we realize.
It's on automatic focus, can't stop?
Two million, eighteen thousand.
It's recording now, right?
So in the warrant tonight, there are several articles, Article two through twelve, that call for, ask the town to allocate some of that free cash for a number of different purposes. So from our original bond money of a little over two million dollars,
I hold it outstanding, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, that are the warrant articles that you have in the, in the, in the cash.
Now, the numbers on some of those articles are going to be significantly different, lower, fortunately. On a couple of those items, so that the bond money will actually, if we approve all of the articles, it will be significantly less than that nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, it will be about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So the Vikings Committee has put three articles on our warrant. And we're recommending that we take some of that free cash and put it in some of our reserve accounts. We spent the last five or six years digging out of the hole in our deficit, paying back to the state the bond money that we were able to borrow, to recover our deficit. One of the things we need to do is to take advantage of years like this where we have some money, and put some of that money away to address needs that we know we have, that we need to plan for and act through with. So the first one's out of the town. O P A is an acronym for other personnel, like the post employment benefits. Primarily, that's health insurance. So when employees of the town retire, typically get a pension from either this county or particular work association that they might have. And the town takes up their share of the health insurance cost. O P A is, the government has set regulations that says that towns must realize and account for the liability they have for future payments of their health insurance for retirees who were past unemployment. And that's what, these are O P As, and it's important to play. Right now, they do a study, and the last study that we have done, is the town liability that is working on the future, how much money it's going to cost to pay the benefits to former employees, is about twenty-four billion dollars. Now, we do that, we pay it to the government. Every year in the budget, there's a line item for retiring health insurance benefits. This year, it was a little over half a million dollars. So that's the way we've handled it in the past. O P A, the government says, you really need to put some money aside and start developing your own trust, so that you set money in the future that's dedicated specifically to that purpose. We all know that health insurance is going to get less expensive, it's going to get more expensive, and the liability account increases because people's lifespans and expectations are longer as well. So if we, if we start building our trust fund, and we have a trust, we put about ten thousand dollars into it seven, eight years ago, and not going to die any since then. So we'll give up twelve thousand dollars in our O P A trust, and we're going to twenty-four billion dollars of liability. If you, if you think about how your pension works, social security works, you pay into that while you're working, and then when you retire, it pays back to you. So that money was invested over the course of your whole working life. And it's invested, and it grows, certainly, we take back more money than we ever paid in pension funds. That's what O P A is, we do for our health insurance. Start building up a trust so that we can reduce the liability that we have in the future. That improves our credit rating, and make sure that the money that's set aside for health insurance can't be used for anything else, like a loan. Article eleven, separation benefits, it's a new one. We, we have it at town meeting, we then allocate a significant amount of money with a long-term contract for your retirees. And these new benefits, typically, a new sick time or a new suspension time, that, we've seen figures that run into twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That's on the budget in there. We know that liability is there, we know that these funds are due to the employees, but we haven't set any money aside to take care of that when the employee chooses to retire or to re-employ in the town. We took a look at this and saw that there's the numbers that are there. Unused vacation, all eighty-one employees that are employed by the town, not the school department, but by the town, get vacation time and they would pay for their vacation if they can't use it. Sick time is a little bit different, it used to be a pretty common benefit to people, buyback of a new sick time. It's, it's not a benefit that's usually honored right now. So people who have been shorter employed at times usually don't have that benefit. So there's a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I remember you walked up to the building, all of the employees, but it all, three hundred and... hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of those benefits. So we're suggesting that we put some money inside, fifty thousand dollars this year, and each year, put some money inside, until the bond money in that fund equals the liability. And then they're going to have to come and try to steal, compete, and pay off when an employee decides to retire. The, the last article is a stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is duly the town's saving accounts. It's the rainy day fund, it's the fund we need when something gets struck at that. We haven't put any money into the stabilization fund, probably since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So we're suggesting that we take some of this money, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and vote, put it into the stabilization fund. What we're also working on is some language that would codify some of these, uh, some of these measures, so that each year, we'd be looking at a way to help some understanding as to how we're going to fund these savings accounts, uh, reserve funds in the future. Any questions?
Last call for questions. Hearing none, we proceed to vote on the article. Each one of you has received votes when you enter the hall this evening. These are your voting pads. If you've never used them before, they're really simple to use. And article one is going to be the practice vote. Uh, if you support the report of the finance committee and the board of selectmen, you press one. If you do not, you press two. And we'll give you about ten seconds to do that. So, vote one for yes, two for no, starting now. And we have ninety-nine percent yes, one percent no, the article passes. Okay, article two will be read by select person LaBrie.
Technical difficulty. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the payment of bills of a prior fiscal year as presented.
Seven. It's been moved in seconded. This does require a nine tenths vote as a recollection for this article. Uh, decision of the selectmen?
Board is recommend recommends approval by five zero.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends six zero.
Does anyone have any questions related to article number two?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Um, this is a customary article that provides the town authorization to pay bills remaining from prior fiscal years.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We will proceed to vote again with your key pad. One, if you support the article number two as identified, two is a no. Please vote. And again, ninety-nine percent to one percent, article two passes. Article three will be read by select person LaBrie.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of sixty-five thousand, for the construction of a municipal parking lot located on Hamilton Crossroad five B, and we had zero, we had three, zero, zero, as presented.
Seven. It's been moved in seconded to approve article three as identified. Vote of the selectmen?
Board is second voted to approve by five zero.
Thank you. Vote of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended six zero.
Thank you. Discussion from the maker of the motion?
Madam Moderator, this parking lot would be located around Pleasant Street, between the library and police station, and would provide additional parking downtown and support a business during and following the central street reconstruction. This will add some twenty-five parking slots.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. A or one is a yes vote on article three, B or two is a no vote. Please vote. And eighty-six percent of the attendees are in support of the article, fourteen percent no, this is only a majority vote, and therefore the article passes. Article four, select person, Tom Salter.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of sixty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents for the acquisition of a replacement one-ton truck for the GTW as presented.
Seven. It's been moved in seconded to approve article one, article four, I'm sorry, as presented. This is a majority vote. Vote of the selectmen?
Board is second recommends approval by five zero.
And the finance committee vote?
Finance committee recommends six zero.
Thank you. Explanation from select person Salter?
Yes, a one-ton truck was totaled in the winter of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, leaving our fleet one truck short for summer winter weather conduct.
Does anyone have any questions or comments related to article number four? Hearing none, all those in favor of article four as presented, press A or one for yes, press B or two for no. Please vote. And the vote is ninety-six percent in favor, four percent no, the article passes. Select person LaBrie will read article number five, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents to fund the FY twenty-one operating deficit for the water department as presented.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
It's been moved in seconded to approve article five as presented, this is a majority vote, and we'll hear from the selectman, your vote.
Board is seconding vote to recommend five zero.
Thank you. And the finance committee, please?
Finance committee recommended six zero.
Select person LaBrie, would you like to speak on the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At the end of the fiscal year, the income does not equal the expenses, so the enterprise has, uh, I just think one thousand change, so we're asking you, we're asking you this evening to approve the free cash.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on article five?
Is that deficit?
Excuse me, could you come up to the mic, please, so we can hear you?
Is that deficit because of fees that weren't collected or because of the rest of the water?
Could the town manager speak to that, please?
Hello? Hey, all right. Excellent question, thank you. So, and to repeat, just to make sure I'm right, the question was if that deficit is due to a lack of collected bills or if it was underestimated or what caused it to operate the system, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Um, and so, to be honest, it's evitable, there were some, um, uncollected bills, which is fairly typical, um, and it wasn't far off from what we normally see. An aspect is, um, the cost of, of running the plant, the, the capital costs exceed, um, to an extent how much we're taking in based on what the water rate is. Um, and so it's a combined mix of issues. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Does anyone else have a question or comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote on article five. All those in favor of the article as presented signify by pressing A or one, those opposed, B or two. Please vote. And the percentage is eighty-five percent in favor, fifteen percent opposed, majority vote, it passes. Article six, select person LaBrie, again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents to fund the FY twenty-one operating deficit for the water department as presented.
It's been moved in seconded to approve article six as presented, this is a majority vote. The vote of the selectmen was?
Board is second voting to approve by five zero.
Thank you. And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends six zero.
Selectman LaBrie, would you like to speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As with the previous article, um, the numbers didn't come out the way that we had hoped they would, or they should have, so therefore we're asking, um, if there's someone wanting to, uh, they can press on, um, four to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, sir, please come up to the microphone.
Let me try, same question as last time, is that because of bills that weren't collected or because of underestimate of the actual cost of the curve?
Sure, so just to repeat, it was the same question as last time, and the answer is the same as well. Water, sewer, bill, together.
Thank you. Does that respond to your question?
Yes.
I have a question.
Did I say another hand? Yes.
Well, it's a deficit. What, what didn't you collect? How much money?
Sure, so that, that number is reflected in the request, um, in the article.
I'm aware.
I'm, I'm sorry, are you asking how much was uncollected or how much was the deficit?
How much money did you not collect, and now we have to help you, give you money to pay bills?
Understood. So the deficit is the amount reflected in the article. The amount uncollected, uh, was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of last time.
Are you putting blame against the people who have not paid their bills?
Sure, so during the COVID-19 pandemic, the shut-off policy was halted, uh, and it was recently restarted several months ago, and did see an uptick in collections, uh, but I would reiterate that the amount that we have uncollected is not untypical. And the same goes for real estate bills likewise, but a- after about a year, that money is moved on to the real estate bill, collected one way or another.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So you're saying if someone hasn't paid their wastewater during the COVID, they're going to have to pay? Is that what you're saying?
No, that is not what I'm saying. What, what I'm saying is it would be typical, if there was a bill that wasn't paid, that we would go out and physically turn the water off. That policy was halted during the COVID-19 pandemic. We returned to that policy several months ago, as a result, we did see an uptick in collections.
So we will eventually get the money that wasn't paid?
Eventually. Uh, but I would also note that the money that wasn't paid was untypical. We, we account for uncollectedness, is what I'm saying.
Are you satisfied with your response? And any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just wondered if, because looking at the articles following this, it looks like it's going to be the same problem again next year, or is this fiscal year? It looks like we're, I don't know if it's the same or not.
Um, that's the next article. Can we stick to the article it's in?
Well, what I'm saying is, if anyone, has anyone looked at the rates, increasing the rates?
Madam Moderator? Yes. I'll have some information on that when we get to that article. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of article six as presented, press A or one for yes, B or two for no. Please vote. And eighty-one percent in favor, nineteen percent opposed, this is the majority vote and for the article passes. Article seven, just in case I turn my page. Select and last, select person LaBrie, article seven, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, before I read the article, I will note there will be some changes in the amounts. I move that the town vote to transfer from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, the sum of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents to fund the projected FY twenty-two operating deficit for the water department, and to decrease the FY twenty-two water budget as voted in article seven of the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-one annual town meeting by seventy thousand dollars, from one million one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, to one million forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve article seven as presented, this is a majority vote. Board of selectmen, decision?
Board is second recommends approval, three to two.
Thank you. And finance committee, decision?
The finance committee voted not to recommend six zero.
Explanation by select person LaBrie?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article, the next one, as was just pointed out, um, addresses the water and wastewater art, um, account for FY twenty-two, which is what we're doing now, FY twenty-one ending June thirtieth of this past year. Um, there are a couple of different things that we are looking at. Number one, um, is the rates. That's always, that's always, uh, one way to, to fill a deficit. In this particular instance, we could also consider increasing the tax rate. Um, the reality is that this has to be addressed, um, in the one of three ways. The twitters mentioned, and then the one that's before us this evening, um, that the state will not allow us to move forward, um, with this knowledge of a projected deficit.
Thank you. You have one? Okay. Okay, um, I know someone's going to ask, so I will vote of the selectmen for the two votes against, just to see if they wish to identify the reasons. And I'll do the same for the finance committee.
And the reason I voted no is because the, the water, what wastewater funds are enterprise funds, they're supposed to be funded by user fees, that's what an enterprise fund is, and this is not using user fees to fund it entirely, that's why.
And, um, I voted no for the, the same reason. Free cash is really our savings, and we should not be paying for operating costs from our savings. It's sometimes you pay for yourself.
Thank you. Finance committee, have a comment on why you voted six zero? Excuse me, Madam Moderator? Yes.
Um, I apologize, I should have, um, identified the other change in the article.
Okay.
And that is the, uh, the source of the funding. Um, our original feeling was that it would be from free cash, and when this article was presented, um, to the board and to finance committee, um, that was our standing. Research, uh, town manager's office has, uh, Research, the town manager's office has told us that we are eligible under the ARPA Fund, the American Rescue Plan Act, to backfill these accounts with money from that act. They've proved it, so therefore we do not need to take it from free cash at the moment. So that is the other change on the article this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Thank you. The Finance Committee is objected to this article because it doesn't resolve the issue. This is the third vote of the town to supplement the water and wastewater enterprise funds covered shut calls. The reality is that the user rates have not supported either of those funds for quite a while. Since I've been on the committee, we've seen the town need to use the retained earnings to balance off the expenditures at the end of the year. Retained earnings is the method for saving savings account. Once you've spent down your savings account, there's nothing else to take care of that deficit, except for the town, which owns the enterprise fund to cover the deficit. So we did that last day. We did it just now for last year's deficit. We're being asked to put money aside for this year's deficit without addressing the issue. And the issue is that the rates are too low. Nobody likes to raise rates. But an enterprise fund operates on the benefit of those people who lose the enterprise, and the cost of the enterprise fund is borne by the users. Certainly, there's infrastructure, and there's money in your operating budget that covers some of the costs for municipal buildings and infrastructure. But this article doesn't address that issue at all. The second concern, yeah, is that we're loading money to cover a deficit that we will realize at the end of June. So we've got about seven or eight months to look at other ways to close that gap, including increasing the rates. So the Finance Committee felt that certainly the problem is real, but the solution is, again, a stopgap solution that puts money from free cash, from the whole town, to fill that hole in the budget.
Yes.
Just a couple of numbers. The residents that use water is 61%. So 39% are paying for those 61% who use water. For wastewater, 66% of the residents are subsidizing the 34% that use it. That was another reason why we just did not think this was fair.
Thank you. Anyone else in the Finance Committee, because I can't turn my hand. Okay. I see a hand raised. Yes. Can you come down and use the microphone or yell? And I will get you in the back.
So I guess my concern is that everybody likes to raise, or would like to recommend to increase the rates. However, you know, we need to also realize that we use and waste a lot of the town water within town events. We, you know, a lot of the well water and other non-town water users use town water, whether it be the summer solstice, whether it be cemetery users, whether it be other, you know, watering the gardens and flowers well town, well of the musters, private and government musters well throughout years, they were not metered for the fire hydrants. Many of the hydrants were used in the years. To my understanding, the veterans, they said that they were metered over at the veterans' buildings and such, but I've also been told it was not. But again, my husband, you know, works a lot and a lot of overtime to be able to pay these bills. And, you know, we keep trying to say to raise these rates, and we need to fall on these town water users. Well, you guys who are not town water users also use this water. Everybody in town uses that water, whether it be another event of some kind. They, you know, the Clyde Garden, they use the water to water the flowers there. I pay that bill. Town water users pay that bill. The cemetery, when they set up the graves and so, excuse me, they don't have an account, I guess, for water and such. They do nest for the maintenance of the grounds and things, but they don't necessarily for the water. So to my understanding, they may be metered at this time, but who's paying for that water? Us, town water users. The country club or the golf club, golf club, that was another account that we lost. That was a huge loss for the town, which, because now we are, you know, a loss of cost. So I guess my concern is that whenever the water or the solstice come up, it's always directed kind of in a negative direction. I just feel that, you know, either the schools or the water, nobody ever wants to kind of fund it, and the well users are always like, nope, it's not my bill. I'm sorry, but you guys all benefit from it. You guys all need to kind of help one another, and we all need to work one another, and you guys need to stop, you know, putting your hands up, because we need to do a better job at collecting these bills on the past articles that people aren't paying their bills and focus on, you know, and not raise the rates. So the ones that are paying the bills aren't, you know, having some trouble. I'm sorry, I have fibromyalgia, so I have a hard time kind of sweating it out, and I'm so aggravated at this point with the water, but I'm just tired of it, because everybody wants to raise their hands and walk away from this water, but the ones that are paying the bills for the water are getting the lunch ticket. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see another hand? Please come down.
I'm going to yell.
I can't hear you, so you've got to yell louder than that.
Okay. I just, I concur with this young woman that just spoke, and I have a question. If they could re-explain where the money is coming from? Where the money is coming from? Yes. Could someone respond to that, either the Finance Committee or the town manager?
It's coming from free cash. And I think the motion was just...
So I can break that down a little bit. So originally, the funding source was listed as free cash. I just want to thank our accounting team, who had just bought an opportunity to use ARPA funding, and whatever funding you received in response to COVID-19. Basically, they had determined that if you can identify and compare the losses that you have in revenue of prior fiscal year due to COVID-19, so this instance, it would be that we were level funded, or on a charity sheet from state aid, and we also saw a level funding in local receipts, that we can count that as a loss in revenue. So any amount that we lost in revenue, we can turn around and use ARPA funding, sort of like free cash. There's a couple more caveats to it, but the most important piece is that ARPA funding is almost exclusively used for infrastructure improvements, water, sewer, drainage, those type of projects. Because we can identify as a loss of revenue, we have more flexibility in using those ARPA funds, or ARPA funds, and that's why we opted to utilize that for our purposes of free cash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have a question? Yes, over here.
Hannah, how long does that ARPA funding go for? Is it just one year?
Sure, so it's three years. It's not quite the length of time, though, that will dictate how quickly it goes, the amount of the funds. We received about $3.4 million in ARPA funds over perspective, with one main line from Ashram, which has cost about $6 million per place. We have over $100 million in capital needs, so that $3.4 million is not really a lot of money. You know, I'm assuming that's...
Madam Moderator? Yes.
Thank you. Kayla Provost, 32 Gooder Street. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I was just wondering if the vote that the Finance Committee took, if it had been, if it could have gone differently, had the ARPA, I think that's correct, had that been the original vote, or is that what the original vote, and your vote stands as is?
Have a response? That was their original vote. Do I see any more hands? I heard someone say so. Select person, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to speak for myself. When we originally voted this was pertaining to free cash, which it no longer is, but my personal feeling, the water users have already been burdened with an increase of 44% on their rates. I understand and I agree that the fund needs to be self-sustaining, and we definitely need to look at rates, but in my opinion, to have that be the only avenue right now, and we're still in the midst of a pandemic, and people are struggling to work and have their daycare and be productive, I just don't think it's the government doing everything that it can to help its constituents when there's other avenues that we can take as a stopgap. I agree that it needs to be addressed. We've asked for water studies and been working with the outside contractor that maintains for us, but I just, I would implore people to think about the times that we're in, especially now that thankfully we did find other funding sources for this. It's not going to be free cash. So it'll just give some time to do that work that does, I agree, need to be done, and just to sway less of a burden, you know, to those who are paying the bills.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Yes.
Mayor Batelash Street, do we still have an issue, or it seems to me, I've read that we have an issue with water coming from Ashramham, and again, infrastructure repairs and things that aren't done for whatever reason, year after year after year, a chronic thing. Is that correct?
Madam Moderator? Thank you. Yes, that is very correct. Unfortunately, we've got...
So I just heard today that Massachusetts is going to get $12 billion in the new infrastructure fund. One of the main focuses of that bill is clean water, but infrastructure for water. So if this CARES Act, correct, is going to get us over the hump this year, and possibly two more years, did someone just say that?
The ARPA plan, you have three years to use the funds. But if you spend all these funds in one year, then that's not...
Okay. And the other side of coin for that is, if the money goes for the water users, I'm a water user, but I'm going to use that phrase, that means it's not going to be used for other important things. I'm just wondering, if, when we get a hike in the rates this year, can't we assume some relief that some major infrastructure construction is going to happen in the next few years that's going to help solve this long simmering problem?
It would be wonderful if it does. Just a couple of points there, and just to make sure I'm not correctly from wrong. We're in the process of having a study done of the infrastructure, water and sewer throughout the town, something that I don't think has quite ever been done.
Are our meters working? Didn't we get new meters recently?
That was shut down. No. Yeah, meters, we're kind of in the same issue. We're just talking about the pipes and the connections and stuff like that. And it's looking like sometime after, shortly after the fifth of the year, we'll have that study, and we'll have that information. So at that point, we'll know what it's actually going to take to put holes and get everything going as far as the infrastructure itself. But unfortunately, for decades, it's been neglected, scratched, and we're correct.
Well, I hope we're looking ready when the money forces.
And after we're ready, the state overall, we need to get $12 million, or $12 million, whatever it is, you've got to remember that Boston's going to take their chunk first. So who knows how much will actually trickle down through the 3151, or 350 other cities and towns in Massachusetts. So unfortunately, that's not something that we can count on, when it gets here, whatever does get here, I agree 100%.
Well, let's be positive in the sense that maybe we're going to get something, and we can take care of this problem that's over a decade that I know of.
Yes, yes, it has. And as we mentioned before, you know, these articles, they don't address the issues. The state has told us that we must have a financial plan in place to, Article Seven and Eight, they go hand in hand, before we can set our tax rate for the next fiscal year. And our tax classification hearing is in two weeks, November 22nd. So between now and November 22nd, the board has to do a one or two things, as I mentioned before. If this does not pass tonight, then we're looking at, within the next two weeks, raising water rates, water and sewer rates, or increasing the tax rate at our tax classification hearing. The articles tonight, they take a little bit of a different spin, because we do have access to the ARPA funds, which as Mr. Sosfat educated, they're targeted for this type of work. But this problem is not going away. For full disclosure, I am not on town water or sewer. I have my own well and my own septic. Some of you may have heard of me before. Two years ago, we had to put in a new septic system, and in the span of about two and a half months, we spent $30,000 from our pocket, because that is our responsibility.
Hey, Mrs... I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
One more thing. Mrs. Santos and others have made a point. Having town water and sewer benefits everyone in town, not just the direct users. It is an economic necessary for people and businesses to come into town and boost our economy. If we didn't have town sewer and water, I doubt a bullspit would be putting in a brewery. So it has economic, there's economic benefit to every single person in town who have a working infrastructure for water and sewer. How do we get there? I don't know. And we're going to have some serious conversations in the next few months about how we do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for cutting you off. Yes.
We're voting on a written article here. ARPA, I don't see it in there anywhere. Can this be reworded so, yes, that is where the money's going to come from, and not, oh, it didn't say that, so we pulled it out and saw that?
I believe it was, the article as presented orally, and that was changed from the written version.
As are the amounts.
The amounts are the same. Okay? 51, 664,2?
51.
Oh, I know that, but it's what was presented orally this evening. Yes.
So it was mentioned, our question about the water and such, so I think at our last town meeting, there was an article, or there was a question about meters being replaced. This woman, young lady, had that... This woman, young lady, head manager. So the meters actually are older and need to be replaced. Our director, DPW director, had came to our meeting and talked about it, and they are actually really old. They need to be replaced, but unfortunately, the article or the idea was shut down. It did not want, they did not want to fund it. So again, why users were out of luck. So we needed to fund it ourselves, or we needed to look at other avenues. So could this ARPA or AAR, whatever, could that, those funds or be used for the meters? Since meters may produce a wrong, you know, cost or price and/or not working properly may be part of, as Dr. said, a problem.
Thank you. It's a great question, but it's not on the topic. So unfortunately, I'm hoping people listen, but the topic is the ARPA funds to work on the ARPA, the deficit projected for the year. Does anyone else have any questions? What?
The amount of money, if you said you forget it, what?
Would you repeat your motion, please? Yes, I will. And I do understand that it's been pleasing sometimes, I've been many years on that side of the table, when there's a change on town meeting floor. So I will go through the article one more time. So the motion is that the town vote to transfer from ARPA, which stands for the American Rescue Plan Act, funds the sum of $51,664.2 to fund the projected FY22 operating deficit for the Water Department and to decrease the FY22 water budget as voted in Article 7 of the May 17, 2021 Annual Town Meeting by $70,000 from $1,113,978 to $1,043,978 as presented. Thank you. Does everyone have that correct now? Okay. I don't see any more questions or hands. All of those in favor? I'm sorry, did I miss a hand? Way in the back. Okay. There's no light back there. I can't see. Sorry.
So now I just have a question to this water budget deficit that seems to be ongoing. At any meeting, we hear about this. So I'm curious, is anybody in the process of finding out why this is actually happening? I mean, does Veolia have something to do with this? Their cross, obviously they're a profit organization. So has anybody looked into that? Has the town?
Is that Mr. Watkins out there?
It is.
Good evening. So to answer your question, and I'm glad you asked, this is a multifaceted issue. It took decades to get us into this situation, so please give us the courtesy of a couple of years to get out of it. But we are working to address it. There are a handful of problems that I would say are within the forefront of this article. So most of our water meters, we're not getting accurate reads on how much water people are using. That did go to town meeting, was going down. One of our DPW director, Brian Frodo, who's been working to find a way to make it happen, and that will be partially funded using ARPA funds. In addition, the water plant facility itself that we share with Ashburnham didn't have an effective capital plan in place. Over the past six months, we've been working with Ashburnham and the only other contractor to get an impactful capital plan in place so that we can fix what's wrong with the system now and also project out five, 10, 15 years from now, what some of our threats are going to be coming down the road instead of waiting for something to fail and then scrambling to find the money. We also have a sewer plant that we operate by ourselves. It's also going through the same capital process. Beyond the plants, we also have to account for all pipes in the road. Then we haven't had an accurate study of those pipes done in a really long time. That just wrapped up in terms of the fieldwork and surveying. So we're waiting to get that data and to compile the list of some of those impactful areas that we can address in terms of leaks. About 28% of the water that we treat in the plant is unaccounted for, meaning that from the time that it leaves the plant, money that we're paying to treat, from the time it leaves the plant, it never leads it to a meter. You know, we lose that for leaks, we lose that for other areas, so we're looking to address that too. There's a lot of issues that go into it, and there's a lot of data that we have to go out and find. We've been hiring professionals, the engineers to go out and find those issues for us. Once we have that data, that will in turn help this board make the formal decision in terms of where the water should be or shouldn't be, in either direction. But at the end of the day, we need to account for the cost of treating the water. We also need to account for the cost of running the plants, maintaining the plants, and then getting the water from the plant to whatever house or business it's going to. So that's a very long answer to your question, which is, are we doing something about it? And the answer is yes.
So we are directly performing an audit against Veolia just to find out what they're doing for what they're charging?
The answer is for that presently is no, we're not auditing Veolia. We're addressing the five known issues that we definitively know exist.
Can we audit them in the future?
I suppose we could do anything, but for now, we're doing the things that we are, we know are known issues that we can address around the area.
Leaky pipes.
That is correct.
Yeah. I just think it would be a really good idea to perform an audit on that company just to find out, I mean, they're a, you know, for-profit company, just to find out what we're spending and where it goes. The issue is transparent as to what they're doing for that money. I'm sure it must be somewhere.
That's certainly something that's on the table, and that's part of the rate study. So part of the reason that we're doing that rate study is because we want to make sure that we go outside of Veolia's orbit and have a party participate and execute that study that has zero connection to Veolia. So there are, there is going to be an outside set of audits. But in order to do that study, we need the data from all the things I just listed. Move the question?
Thank you. Move the question. I think we've heard it long enough, and it's time to move on. Therefore, using your keypads, all those in favor of Article 7 as read twice, A or 1 is a yes, B or 2 is a no. Please vote. And this is a majority. 70% in favor, 30% opposed. Article 7 passes. Article 8. Select an elaborate.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 8. Again, this is going to be slightly different than what we have. I move that the town vote to transfer from ARPA, ARPA funds, the sum of $26,127.33 to fund the projected FY22 operating deficit for the wastewater department and to decrease the FY22 wastewater budget as voted in Article 8 of the May 17, 2021 Annual Town Meeting by $100,000 from $1,512,166 to $1,412,166 as presented.
I hear second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 8 as identified verbally. And the vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend the article 3 to 2.
3 to 2. And the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted not to recommend the article 6 to 0.
Okay. This is a majority vote as well. Explanation from Selectman Library.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As we just discussed in Article 7, the water, wastewater going in and out, so everything that we spoke about in the last article, the reasoning, everything? As far as I can tell, and I remember everything we talked about applies to Article 8 as well, but the reasoning, the work that we're doing, et cetera.
Okay, so the reasons I don't need to ask again. Okay. Any questions? Comments? I see somebody behind me. Yes.
Again, we speak to the Finance Committee's reasons for not recommending this article. Selectmen have a brief point out. The board members have the same as well. It doesn't resolve a long-term problem. It is a, I think it's premature to realize that the state to make some adjustments to the budgets so that we're not so relatively, not in the budget, but so relatively underfunded. But we can project that we'll have a deficit to deal with in May. The Finance Committee feels that rather than address a potential unknown number, that it's wiser to wait. The funds that we're being proposed to fund this article will be available in May, and we have a much clearer idea as to what final number it will be. It also provides more time for the review to be addressed.
Thank you. Madam Moderator? Yes. If I may, Madam Moderator, to the Finance Committee, with the understanding that the board of Selectmen has until November 22nd to decide where, how this whole is going to get plugged, does the Finance Committee have any recommendations? Our three options, as we see, is the ARPA funds tonight, raise the water and sewer rates in the next two weeks, or increase the tax rate.
I guess from my perspective, it would be raising the rates or something. And I think, I think we're so far behind on rates right now that to bring the rates up to the point where it could actually be, could be performed by a plan that puts it in place, maybe a theory of time, where there's a series of steps to increase the rates so that the users are supporting the enterprise. So that's our, yes, that's a step we take in addition to the other two.
Thank you. Thank you. And any other, last call for questions? Comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 8 as presented verbally with a majority vote being required, press 1 or A for yes, press 2 or B for no, and please vote. And it passes 71% to 29%. This article is approved. Article 9, select person Salter, please.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,553.33 to the fiscal year 22 Veterans Service Director from now on account as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 9 as presented. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted not to recommend 6 to 0.
Okay. We'll give the explanation and come back to you, Finance Committee. Explanation, select person Salter?
This article proposes to supplement the fiscal year 22 Veterans Services budget, allowing for 70 additional hours to address a backlog of reporting issues to improve services provided to our veterans.
Thank you. Reasons from the Finance Committee?
Yes. Certainly, the director of the Veterans Service is entitled to be paid for all the additional hours that he works. It's just that it does require a vote to transfer from free cash to add that money to that account. Every year, at the end of the year, the Finance Committee needs to vote to balance the budget. Certain accounts that it might be over, and there are other accounts that are under, and we vote to transfer money to balance out the budget. An unexpected expenditure of $1,500 is not really rise to the level of needing to go to the town and ask for that money to balance the budget. It's never been paid, and we have a reserve account for situations where unexpected expenses need to be covered. To put an audit in the water, to give that money, it's just an asset.
Thank you. This is a majority vote, as I said earlier. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Madam Moderator?
I heard it from somewhere. Select person will point.
If he's willing, I would like to ask the town manager to tell town meeting why he felt the need to put this article on the record.
Thank you. To answer the question, this article is not really about money at the end of the day, at least not to me. This is something that was important because when I first got to town, we had walked into a situation where unfortunately, we lost our veterans agent. There was a backlog of issues, and our new veterans agent is doing excellent now, coordinating with the state, trying to get us up to date. The issue is there have been inconsistent payments going out to our veterans, and so I hear from a lot of the community, veterans and their spouses who rely on these checks to fund. And so at the end of the day, you know, while we certainly could have addressed this at the end of the year for a transfer, we've done it quietly, and I wanted to make sure that this is a move that we did lightly, because that was something that was, that personally as a manager, I felt was important, and I felt it was important for the community to know that they were supporting veterans and that this was an issue in terms of town hall operations that we were addressing actively. And, you know, it's not the same thing about, it doesn't support veterans, I'm not going to put that statement. I definitely understand the sentiment behind their vote, and I appreciate it. But again, today, it was important to me to make sure that it's a gesture, that the community had an opportunity to vote, to make sure that they knew they were being supported, that there was a shortcoming on the pound in terms of how that office was being managed previously, to make sure that they knew that there was a point in place to take the move. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 9 as presented, yes vote is 1 or A, no vote is 2 or B. Please vote. And the vote is 81% in favor, 19% opposed. The article passes. Article 10. Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $50,000 to the OPEB trust account as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 10 as presented. Vote, this is a majority vote. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended to approve 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 6 to 0.
Thank you. And the explanation from Dr. Ward?
The town has previously established an OPEB trust account, however, it's not been consistently funded. This is an explanation that I provided at the beginning of the meeting. The article will help us to get the account back on track as a fiscal best practice.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 10 as presented signify with pressing 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And this passes 92% to 8%. Motion is passed. Article 11. Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $50,000 to a reserve account established to mitigate the town's liability for contractual separation payouts as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 11 as presented. Majority vote will be required on this article. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend the article 5-0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 6-0.
Thank you. Explanation?
Yes, this account sets aside funds to address potential budget shot calls in the event of mass contractual separation through time and otherwise. An individual leaves employment who requires payout notification, and in some cases, sick time, and this account will reduce the potential financial exposure to the town.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 11 as presented, signify with your keypad, A or 1 for yes, B or 2 for no. Please vote. Voting has ended. 93% in favor of Article 11, 7% oppose. The article passes. Article 12. Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $130,000 to the stabilization account as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 12 as presented. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend 5-0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve the article 6-0.
Thank you. This is a majority vote. Could we have an explanation, please?
Yes, we recommend that the community maintain the stabilization account represented at 5% to 10% of the annual operating budget, which means about $1.5 billion, $3 billion. These funds should be available, should be, should align on plan expensive here. Stabilization account currently stands at $1,166,750. This transfer would help move the stores of all at 5% threshold, you know, $1.5 billion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 12 as presented, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And 99% in favor, 1% oppose. Article 12 passes. Article 13. Select personal point?
I move to authorize the town manager, in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 44 or 1621(c), to enter into a lease purchase agreement for a term of three years for the acquisition and equipping of a crack dealer for use by the Department of Public Works at a total cost of $93,382.16.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 13 as presented. Please be aware, this requires a two-thirds vote. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend this article 5-0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Thank you. And the explanation, please?
The DPW has a line item of $200,000 in the annual operating budget for outside services. We've spent up to $90,000 in the years past for crack dealing services. This purchase will allow us to bring these services in-house for significant savings and better services. This will be annually, over three years, at $31,127.72 per year, using funds that are typically appropriated in the general operating budget.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Use your keypads. All those in favor of Article 13 as presented, signify with pressing A or 1 for yes, B or 2 for no. Two-thirds vote required. Please press. And the vote is 99% to 1%. No question there. About two-thirds vote, the article passes. Article 14. Select personal point, please?
I move to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from Michael, I apologize for mispronouncing, Michael Thoreen and Bonnie Thoreen, or from the then current owners pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 60, Section 77(c), two parcels of land with the improvements thereon identified as accessories map 5C3-0-20 located at 3 Beach Street, and accessories map 5C3-0-220 located at 11 Beach Street as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 14 as presented. This is a majority vote. Vote of the selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend 5-0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend 5-1.
And then we hear the 1? If he or she wishes.
Hello?
Hello.
So my recommendation to not approve this was simply because it's a property that is known to have some cleanup required, hazards, and those can be extremely expensive, and once we accept the property, we accept the whole liability.
Thank you. Could I have an explanation from the maker of the motion?
This property owes $150,000 in back taxes. Rather than go through the courts, this process will allow the property owner to voluntarily turn the parcels over to the town.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
If I could just highlight a little bit of some of the backstory of this and some of the work that's been done.
Our town manager, please?
Thank you. So, and I do agree that on sites like this, it's kind of, it's a gift, but you have to kind of keep an eye on it, because you don't know necessarily what you're getting. So, the person that I did want to out-pound, I went to the Finance Committee, the Selectmen to possibly transfer some funds, so that we can do some Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing on that site. Our concern was, we didn't want to accept this property and then find out it had a million-dollar cleanup attached to it. So we did do a very thorough study. We found some standard hazardous building materials, asbestos, paint, et cetera, everything. You would expect to find, and then given the nature of the work that was done on that site, where it was not a body garage, we did also expect to find drums, tires, miscellaneous materials, also, you know, some oil on the property, some leaks on the hydraulic lifts and everything along those lines. So, part of the reason we're doing that study is because we wanted to know what would it cost to clean it up, so that it wasn't a question mark, so we could know with relative certainty how much it would be. That came to about $128,500, and that addresses the items that we listed there. So, the plan for the property would be to raise the structure, because it's efficient. The two-family structure next to the garage, and the next area, we'll see, there's a motion to, a potential motion to move both of those parcels over to the redevelopment authority. The plan would be to rehab that two-family, get it back on the tax roll, sell it at market rate, and then use the proceeds from that to pay to raise the garage, clean up the structure, and put a park on the corner heading into town. So when you come over the bridge on Spring Street, one of the major gateways throughout downtown, so you see a lot of painted garage, tire piles and oil barrels, you're going to see a nice park. We'll do a nice walk-in. So we'd be doing that at no expense to the taxpayers. That's the big piece of it. I also quickly want to thank Crazy Murphy, our planning and economic development director, for helping us move through the process of license, our professional, in terms of determining what that would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14 as presented, press on your keypad 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please press now. The vote is 87% in favor, 13% oppose. Since it's a majority vote, this article passes. Article 15. Select personal point?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make the town-owned property located at 3 Beach Street and 11 Beach Street, as shown on the accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-20, and accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-220, respectively, for such consideration, including nominal consideration, and upon such other terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to the execution of instruments and documents as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 15 as presented. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend this article 5-0.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee has a recommendation for amendment to this article, to include the Winchton Redevelopment Authority in the article, third line down, respectfully, to include there to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority for such consideration and upon such terms and limits.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the article to include the Winchton Redevelopment Authority. We're moved, we're, thank you. We're discussing the amendment only at this point. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'd like to hear from the explanation from the maker of the amendment first.
The Finance Committee felt that, as the intent is to give it to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority, we wanted it very clear and specified in that motion. So three, four, five years down the road, we don't hear, well, that wasn't what the motion read. We want to make sure that that's exactly how the motion reads.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments related to the amendment only? Hearing none. You're voting on the amendment to add to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority to the proposed amendment. All those in favor of Article 15 amendment signify yes by pressing A or 1, no by pressing B or 2. Please vote. The amendment passes 97% to 3%. That is approved. I will review the Article 15 with the amendment, so that you'll know what you're voting on. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote, once we get to that vote. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 3 Beach Street and 11 Beach, as shown as accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-20, and accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-220, respectively, to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority, for such consideration, and upon such other terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said property or act in relation thereto. And I would ask the maker of the motion to provide an explanation for the article.
This would authorize the town to transfer these properties to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority with the intent to repair and sell the two-family residential structures, with proceeds to be used to clean up and remove the auto-repair shop site for future development as a passive park.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I see a hand raised in the prayer hall.
Mr. Mayor, identify a funding source. Is there a grant or some kind of available funding to rehab or repair the, either property?
Can we get a response, please?
Yeah, so as previously described, the redevelopment authority will be using their funds to fix up the two-family property. The proceeds from that sale, the funds that were used, and then anything remaining will be used to raise the garage structure, as well as put in the park, once again, to the cost of the back there.
Thank you. Question answered? Yes, sir.
It will be for sale, not for auction, so somebody can go and win the bid for $20, and then we're stuck in the hole?
We're going to be selling it at market room.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We're going to vote on the Article 15 as amended. This is requiring a two-thirds vote. Using your keypads, 1 or A is yes, 2 or no, 2 or B is no. Please vote. 97% in favor, 3% oppose. It certainly meets the two-thirds requirement. Article 15 passes. Article 16. Select one, Ward?
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 4 Summer Drive, and shown as accessories map 5B3 parcel 0-153, with such consideration and upon such other terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said real property as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 16 as presented. This requires a two-thirds vote. Vote of the Board of Selectmen?
5-0 to recommend.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee had an amendment to this proposed article to include Bull Spit Brewing Company. As it is our understanding that the Bull Spit Brewing Company was supposed to have, this property was supposed to have been transferred to them, and somehow it was missed along the way, so this is just to clean up that. Again, for the same reason as the prior motion, we wanted to make sure it was very clear. This is right after parcel 0-153 to Bull Spit Brewing Company for such consideration.
And what was the vote of Finance Committee, please? Thank you. Any more comments?
You got it.
I got it. Oh, yes, I do. Okay. We're going to vote on the amendment and discuss the amendment first. The amendment is to add Bull Spit Brewing Company to Article 16. We, I'm sorry, I missed the second. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Thank you, guys. Okay. Would the maker of the amendment like to speak to that? Or you already did? They're already spoken to. Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none. You're voting on the amendment only. All those in agreement with the amendment to Bull Spit Brewing Company being added to Article 16, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And it's 93% to 7%. The article passes. Now, we'll go back to the article itself as amended. Would someone like to speak, Mr. Ward, to the explanation for this article?
This parcel has no value, and was overlooked when transferring property at 4 Summer Drive to Bull Spit Brewing Company for redevelopment. This vote would authorize the town to transfer this property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And I will read the whole article as amended before you vote. Okay. The article is amended. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 4 Summer Drive, and shown as accessories map 5B3 parcel 0-153 to Bull Spit Brewing Company, for such consideration and upon such other terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purp- effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said property or act in relation thereto. I don't see any other hands raised, so let's vote on this. All those in favor of Article 16 as just read, including the amendment, signify by pressing 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And as I said, the two-thirds is required. Ninety-five percent to five percent. The two-thirds has been met. The article passes. Article 17. Select man Ward?
Madam Moderator, I move to accept Madison Avenue as a public poundway. For all purposes, custom area, the public way, including maintenance, will be there in the location laid out by the Board of Selectmen. On plan, over there's Madison Avenue subdivision plan dated October 14, 2008, and drawn by handway, in adhering paint. Said plan has been placed on file with the town board, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept all such necessary property interest for said public way as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 17 as presented. It's a majority vote required. Vote of the Board of Selectmen?
5-0 to recommend.
Thank you. Finance committee vote?
Finance committee recommended 6-0.
Thank you. Would the maker of the motion provide an explanation?
This road is part of a recent development and has all necessary paperwork documentation in place. This vote would allow the town to formally accept it as a public way. The road has also been checked by EPDA, and it meets all the requirements.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Yes?
Is there any estimate, good made estimate, what a reasonable cost will be to bring it up to standard for the drainage or whatever is stated this year, over the first year?
Sure, this is a new development, so it presently is not the standard.
Good question. And any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 17 as read, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. This is a majority vote. Please vote. And the vote is ninety-seven percent to three percent. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you to the seventy-nine people who came tonight. Thank you.